Rollins made a suggestion that we should do it more often in different areas. Nothing wrong with setting up in a park and let people come. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Twenty, not quite twenty.
Yeah, Prater was in.
Yeah, but I still had the vehicle this weekend. Jake was in, uh, P M O, just having a bit of a... Jake's got a cold hamstring, so I didn't get it.
Hamstring in two weeks?
Yeah, that's nuts.
Oh, man, I mean, even though he's twenty-something, then two weeks is for hamstring? That is too... It's not bad, though, it's coming since, though.
I want to try and... Yeah, I want to try and give you this to you guys, at least in advance, so you got a chance to look at them and... At least to cheer them up.
Huh? Hope for the worse. No, I was hoping that they would show up, because they're sixteen after.
Of course. Oh, really?
Yeah. Really?
They're actually...
Is there one out there, really? Is there a real trainee?
Well, after that, you gotta leave out, because after that, they're tearing up W... Doing all these lotto's. They are, now. There was a couple changes I made in late because of contacts. Like, you know, used and chewed.
I got that change.
I have fifty-five on one side and forty-five on the other.
Fifty, fifty, fifty.
Eighty-five.
Oh, you're doing the shoes.
For sure. I'm only interested in changing the...
I did not check today.
I was wondering, because this could be a rule slam ban thing.
He said he was gonna pop. He said he was gonna look, and I've seen he was gonna stop.
They did, and he was stopped. Okay, fine, I'll hear you in a minute.
Now, I'm just...
Good evening, it's six-thirty, and we'll call this regular meeting of Marion Council to order.
Mr. Bar?
Present.
Mr. Rattler?
Present.
Mr. Schaber?
Here.
Ms. Lang?
Present.
Mr. T. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Prater?
Here.
Mr. Arsman?
Present.
Mr. Rollins?
Present.
Mr. Neff?
Here.
Mrs. Stoneberger?
Present. We begin with the invocation followed by the pledge. Master of the earth, come on up.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. I know you can have somebody better than me here, but I want to say thank you for this, okay? So, we're gonna pray, and if you want to close your eyes, okay, we're gonna pray. Lord and Father in heaven, to you be the glory. We ask in the name of Jesus that you take control of this meeting. Bless each one of these. Give them wisdom, bless their life and their families. Keep them all in your hands, Holy Spirit. All for your glory, Father, and if anyone is going through time of difficulty, we ask you to have mercy in the name of Jesus. Thank you, Father, for everything. We know we make many, many mistakes. We want to say sorry, we want your mercy, we want to say thank you, Lord, for your love, for everything. Take care of this meeting. Take care, Lord, of everything. Give us the opportunity to talk. Give us the opportunity to make decision, good decision, on your name. Thank you for everything, Holy Spirit, Father, and thank you, Jesus Christ. Everything is on your hands. This is your time, oh, Lord, thank you. Amen. Amen. Thank you.
I'd like to give this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Begin with summary proceedings. Mr. Schaber?
Yeah, I just have a question. I don't know if it's a typo or something I'm missing. There are several places where it says Rule 55 was suspended. Now, isn't that Rule 44? Or am I missing something?
Well, we've had a lot of discussion about those two rules because they cover just essentially the same thing.
Rule 55 is the statutory rule that requires three readings.
I thought Rule 44 was.
Rule 44 requires us to have debate if we suspend Rule 55.
I guess we will discuss that when we get down to that item.
Just a point of clarification, if I could, we could ask the law director. That's not ever been my understanding. My understanding was that when you suspend Rule 44, you are suspending the three readings that is in Rule 55, but the suspension is actually 44.
I'm looking at it. So, the only reason there seems to be some confusion is both Rule 44 and Rule 55 refer to the statutory obligation to have an ordinance read on three occasions. So, they both reference it. So, either one will work because you're suspending the three reading rule requirement. So, they both reference the requirement that three readings. So, I don't think either side is wrong. So, to counsel, however, they want to refer to the fact that when there's a motion to suspend, whether it's referencing 44 or 55, technically, it's not gonna make a difference.
Now, this is a long time ago, but when I was on, when I was first on council, I was one that almost never voted to suspend the rules. Like, we're talking almost never. I've softened on that a lot over the years, but, and it was explained to me back then that 55 is mentioned in 44, and you had to suspend 44, too, because you had to suspend them both. And 44 suspends them both, and 55 does not.
So, I don't... My opinion then, I'm sticking with my opinion then.
It was.
I mean, that was how you explained it to me then, so, I mean, I've, you know, I've operated under that assumption for, you know, the last twenty years. Because, you know, because you had said that 55 is, it's, if I remember, it's been a long time since I've read it, that 44 states in there that it suspends your statutory obligation, which is contained in 55, if I remember correctly.
That's correct. It is contained within Rule 55.
So, you had said you had to suspend 44 because we had to, that essentially suspended them both.
So, Rule 44 says a suspension of the statutory rule. And it specifically, it's in regards to the three reading rule. So, Rule 44 is specifically regarding the three reading rule. So, it's consistent with what you just said, meaning when you suspend Rule 44, it's suspending the three reading rule. 55 has a lot more material on it, and it just simply references the three reading rule in one of the, in, um... Actually, it's in subsection B, where there's A, B, C, and D. So, the specific reference is in 44.
May I ask a point of clarification? So, under the specifics, do you have something about discussion and debate?
That's in Rule 44.
And in 55?
So, 55 doesn't reference debate. 55 is a longer list, as I mentioned, there's subsection A, B, C, and D, and it talks about all the steps that are required to be taken before that you can have a passage of an ordinance or resolution. So, just for sake of clarity, if you want to suspend the rules requiring three readings, it's suspending Rule 44. Okay. Thank you.
Those need to be corrected, and...
So, since at this meeting, it was cited Rule 55, and I noticed, for whatever reason, for the last few weeks, Rule 55 has been cited, so that's actually a two-step vote then.
What's a two-step vote?
So, if you suspend Rule 55, you also have to suspend Rule 44.
No, my advice is as clear as I can be. The motion to suspend the three reading rule is a motion to suspend Rule 44, and technically, from a legal perspective, the reference to a number, if it's erratic, isn't gonna have any significance. So, the motion to suspend the requirement of three readings is actually sufficient. So, you don't have to reference the rule.
So, there's no change that we need to take for Rule 55?
The clerk's indicated he's going to change those minutes, put 44 in place of 55, and there's no additional requirement necessary.
So, that's my question. The motion was made to suspend Rule 55. That's, in the minutes, it has to be what's said. So, we can't change, right?
What I typically say is motion to suspend, or motion to suspend the three readings.
Specifically the three reading rule.
The, sometimes I've heard the clerk, don't you sometimes say it? May I just mention that?
I've asked, or which one are we specifically doing? Because occasionally, it's, well, I make a motion to suspend the rule.
Yeah.
Which rule?
And the right response would be...
And I got asked, is it 55?
No, the right response, I'm sorry, well, the right response would be to suspend the rule requiring three readings. And you're just getting really specific and technical, and that's a good thing, by referencing the number. It's hard enough to have the number in front of you and be able to recall which rule it is by number. So, the proper motion would be the motion to suspend the three reading rule, and that's sufficient.
Okay.
In this case, I don't see any need to go back and do anything that was done at a prior meeting, because the intent was to suspend the three reading rule.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have the summary proceedings, Mr. Smith?
I mean, we accept the proceedings with corrections.
And we have a second from Mr. Arsman.
Mr. Bar?
Yes.
Mr. Rattler?
Yes.
Mr. Schaber?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Arsman?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Someone has accepted the answer. Full business, Resolution 2025-007, Trex Minutes.
Resolution expressing the city of Marion Council's endorsement and acknowledgement that the Trex transfer will be an economic development project.
Uh, this comes out of Mr. Arsman's committee?
Uh, yes, this came out of Jobs and Economic Development Committee with a two-one recommendation to approve. Before we get started on discussion, I have a couple of things I'd like to say on this. In my experience, when people go shopping and they want to buy more than one item, say, a list of five, six, seven items, if they know that a store does not have one of the items that they want to buy, they skip that store altogether. They go to a store that's got everything. In my opinion, Megamoo or Yoshbi, what they're trying to do is they're trying to get another product that they can offer so that they can be competitive with the people that are in the neighborhood. Now, I heard a couple of weeks ago that it was said that they would be taking business away from the people in the neighborhood, the businesses that are already there, and that's true. But when you think about it, any business that comes to Marion is going to be taken away from other businesses in Marion. The only, the only thing that we do is we try to get as many businesses as we can in the city so that we can attract new people. So, that's my point on the whole thing, is that I think that Yoshbi or Megamoo is trying to become competitive, and they're not gonna hurt the business of any of the neighboring businesses anymore than any other company, like Walmart, or Meyer, or any other company that sells the same product.
To that point, Adam, and I was thinking the same thing he was, actually. How often do you see four fast food restaurants altogether? How often do you see three gas stations? Or four gas stations, a gas station on every corner? I used to hear that all the time about Marion, those gas stations, they're all want to get it. You say, well, they're taking from one another, but why they put all the fast food places in the same area? It draws people to that area and grows the business of all of them.
Mr. Neff?
So, if you use the logic that they took away from one and it wouldn't add no more tax dollars, why would they develop things that way?
Mr. Neff?
Yeah, I mean, I think Yashi's Food Mart has proven the economic development that would come from this, the economic increase, but, and for that, that reason, I'm probably in favor of this. But more importantly, I went over there today and looked around, and you have a business that's investing in our community. They're trying to bring investment into our community. And selling carryout alcohol is just gonna allow them to increase their bottom line and to remain viable in that market. When I went to the store, I can tell you, I walked around the entire property, the parking lot. They've just invested in this building. They painted the building, it looks fresh and new. If you go over there at night, it's lit up very well. I went in the store, the store is very clean and neat, and to me, a convenience store has to have milk, so I walked around and looked, and not only do they have gallons of milk, they got half gallons of milk. You can't find a convenience store that sells that. So, but also for the neighborhood, I think this business offers something that others do not. They have fresh hot food meals that you can buy there. There's pizzas, sandwiches, and other things, and it just seems to me like this is an important business for that neighborhood. And the business is coming to us saying, we would like to sell alcohol to continue to make our business viable going forward. So, I commend them for making improvements in that neighborhood and doing what they've done, and I think that's what I got to say on that.
Mr. Bar?
Just had a question, did you guys follow up, go on the traditional route with your liquor license?
We did, and thank you for bringing that to our attention. Ms. Lang? I hope I pronounced that correctly. We did bring it to our attention last, two weeks ago, on the tenth, that there was actually two permits available. However, at the present time of that conversation, there was two permits, two applications that were submitted already. And what seems to happen is people will submit applications, retain it on file in hopes that next year, that someone will, their permit will expire come February first. And that's exactly what happened. One was awarded, actually, so there's only one permit available, one on file. We did submit the very following thing, just as a Plan B, of course. So, we should be the second application on file. However, we have no recourse to get that permit unless the prior applicant does not get awarded it. So, that's where we're at with that.
Just to clarify, I believe what was said in the intent behind what was said about the increase of tax revenue and it taking from the other, from the other businesses, is that when you look at the application, it tells you how much tax revenue that they are projecting to bring. But then, when you are, have an establishment that sells this exact same thing to you, catty corner across the street, directly across the street, and then directly behind that building across the street, and if you take from them, it is not a net gain in taxes. Because if you have, for easy math, a thirty thousand dollar sales tax, but this place lost ten, this place lost ten, and this place lost ten, the community really realized zero. And we don't work on sales tax anyway, we only work on income tax. And I think what we already established is that the jobs that they were looking to create there, A, they've already created because they already have the business going. And two, it was about twenty-five hundred dollars a year that the city is going to yield from this, from this establishment. And I just think it's a lot of risk to take. I think that Columbus sets a certain number of permits for a reason. I think that when you then Trex them in from another community, and now we are gonna be plus two from what the state says we are supposed to have here in an already economically depressed community, and you put alcohol, 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 you're actually going to exacerbate the problem instead of ever help the problem. And that's why, and this is in my ward, that's why that I cannot support it.
I appreciate that comment, of course. Going back to what Mr. Prater, Mr. Smith mentioned, that we believe that what it'll do is just create more competitive market for that location. Other locations might have to drop a few cents to meet with the pricing, of course. And mainly, we aren't confident we can sustain a convenience store model without the alcohol, because as Mr. Smith mentions as well, if we don't have that availability, well, there goes maybe chips down the line, there goes food down the line, milk. It's five, six different items. And we don't think that we can, there's a risk that we can sustain that, and we might have to shut down a lot sooner than we would want it, but there's no chance we're gonna be able to increase from three employees right now. I mean, we only opened a convenience store on March first, so we're two, three weeks in. So, we yet to see if we can even sustain our level. Definitely can't grow without that, without that, that's for sure.
Ms. Lang?
Would it be next, you've applied for the permit, so it would be next February before you would know?
Yes, unless if the individual ahead of us, for whatever reason, they cannot meet the demands of what the liquor permit would be with the department, be it objections, and just that this fluid things could happen. But if they do everything that they should, they will get awarded that permit. If they are ahead of us, of course, so if they do, we have absolutely no avenue until next February first. And that's, you know, fingers crossed, hoping that we have that availability, no guarantee whatsoever.
And once we get the Trex permit into our community, it remains there?
It will remain there, yes, unless someone would like to Trex one out of here, of course. But it would remain there indefinitely unless someone Trex a permit out.
Ms. Rattler?
Which just, they can't do because there, you can't Trex one out that is in use.
No, yes, correct. It would be one that's typically how it happens, it's actually more expensive to go this route. Typically, you try to find a permit that's in safekeeping, or, for example, we have an email order string with sixty attorneys on it, and what I did, find our permit in Westerville, I reached out to the attorneys there, see if anybody's selling it. We kind of communicate between each other, of course. But the first step, well, that's step one. Step two, right after that, has to come to whatever city council it is, in hopes that it gets approved. So, that's where we're at with that.
I actually grew up in that area, and actually, forty years ago, worked in that building. I actually worked in there when it was owned by Cal Lamb, and there was pizza, we had everything in there, video games, so forth like that, and I just was, I know that that corner is very active. That corner is very active, and it always has been, and I just, not, I don't think there's gonna be some gigantic economic boom from this Trex permit for Marion, Ohio, but I don't see inhibiting people from free enterprise.
Our biggest goal here, as we've mentioned in the beginning, is hoping to grow, to apply to employees, which in turn, you know, that's, now we're talking fifteen, twenty people in a household, that's gonna get some sort of economic benefit here. And that would definitely help the citizens and residents in the area, and that's our number one goal.
Mr. Prater?
I'd like to start off by saying I had really a neutral opinion. I don't think it was gonna be detrimental to have another license in that area, but I feel obligated to, just before council tonight, the fire chief gave me something that was sent to him today from the, from the Marion County Health Department. And I guess I feel obligated to let you guys know this before we vote. Man Cresiff had sent an email to Nikita, which I'm assuming is one of the owners, that states it has come to our attention that construction work, including the installation of walls, was completed without prior approval from the fire department. Additionally, plumbing work in both restrooms was conducted without obtaining the required plumbing permits from Marion Public Health. At this time, the only legal, licensable portion of your operation is the dairy bar. Retail site is being operated without proper approval, which is a violation of regulatory requirements. Until you successfully complete the plan... Until you successfully complete the plan review process with our department, you are not permitted to operate the retail portion of your business. We have made multiple efforts to work with you through this process. However, you have proceeded with work and operations despite knowing these requirements. Immediate corrective action is necessary to bring your establishment into compliance. Please cease unauthorized operations immediately. Contact our office to begin the proper plan review process. Failure to comply may result in further enforcement action. Again, this is not my words, this is an email from Van Cressop at the Marion County Health Department. And I just felt obligated to give that information, being that's what we're talking about.
We've had all the information catered today.
Uh, March 24th.
Thank you for that.
You might not even know about it.
I don't, I don't, I don't. Complete news to me, I don't know what they're giving us to secure our defects here. But if it has any bearing on this vote here, if we do proceed with an approval, I have no problem, of course, waiting to proceed with any sort of application until we do have all of that approved. I don't, we're not going to submit an application until that.
Ms. Rattler?
I just, I, I feel, and I said this in committee as well, that when you partner with an establishment, especially if you're going to bring in a liquor operation that brings you above the state's threshold, you have to have confidence in that establishment that they are completely following the rules and will follow the rules above everything. And there's nothing in the process, from start to finish, that would give me any confidence that that would happen. And it started clear back months ago, when it took three applications to even get this to where that it is now. And I don't even think your third application is accurate. And you've already put money into the establishment without knowing that if you're even going to get it. And now you're saying after thousands of dollars that you have put in, you don't even know if you have a viable business because you put the cart before the horse there, too. Then the upgrades that you made, we just find out tonight, you're, is, you didn't even get permits or have anybody from the fire department or the health department look at it? It's just nothing you've done from start till now would give anyone any confidence that rules and laws would continue to be followed if you were allowed to have, have, have alcohol there.
I'm unable to comment on any of the zoning issues, of course, and the planning there, but I can say, as I've mentioned, the owner actually has been operating a liquor permit here in Marion pending transfer for past 70 months now. No ding on the liquor permit, no underage violations, no unsanitary conditions, no underage sales, no furnishing. So we've had a clean permit for about eight, nine months that's pending. So I'd like to bring that forward as, to show that we do know how to experience and run a liquor permit and establishment properly.
Mr. Harsmith?
Yeah, I have a quick question. I'm not sure who would answer this, but if, if you were approved today, how long would it be before you would be allowed to start selling alcohol?
Look, so the way that this works, we couldn't sell until we were approved. Under a transfer, we get into what's called a management agreement, and once you submit a transfer and it's pending, you have operational privileges under prior owner's liquor permit. Here, this would be essentially treated as a new permit, I believe. Even though it's essentially a transfer from Westerville, I believe it's treated as a new, new permit application, and you would not have permission to sell the liquor permit until we are awarded that. That could be three months, could be six months, nine months. Everything depends on, a lot of it depends on us and how fast we go back and correspond with the department to make sure they have everything. My office, we do a lot of liquor work in Columbus, Ohio, pretty 50 years' worth of experience there. And we send in, you know, weekly updates once or twice a week, just asking the department, hey, is there anything outstanding that you need? BCI fingerprints check, financial verification, just, just whatever it is, final inspection schedule, all of that stuff. Which there used to be a final inspection before the liquor permit is awarded as well. So, so there's, there's some time. We wouldn't just be awarded it, we wouldn't be here with hopefully an approval submitted, and we could start in two weeks. Now, unfortunately, not.
My, my point to that question was that, based upon what just came from the mayor and the health department, you won't be able to do liquor sales for three to six months, right?
Well, no, we won't get awarded there without a final inspection. And final inspection has to come from liquor themselves as well, where they'll come out before they are awarded as well. So that kind of goes hand in hand with the city of Marion here, and kind of working all together to try to get that done prior. Because we won't get the permit issued unless we meet all the requirements.
Okay. So even if it's approved here, you still can't do it?
Even if it's approved today, we still got our road. Then, I mean, if we get out of here with an approval, I still have a division of liquor control to deal with. Which at that point, like I said, if we meet all the requirements and stuff, we will get it awarded. But the very last step is to schedule a final inspection, where someone would come out, obviously, and they should have the fire inspections, I think, save the inspection, just buy everything else, all the licenses.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yeah, so tonight is the third reading, and that means we should take a vote. So I'm going to ask you, in light of what, I'm thankful for the mayor bringing that email forward, do you want to take a roll of the dice for us to vote tonight? Or would you want us to postpone the third reading to a future date and take a vote later?
Good, I perhaps get a two to four minute recess, just to kind of, just to discuss with the client and the permit, and just kind of see if you want to go ahead with it. I, I won't be longer than two minutes.
I think it, if council's okay with it, we can go on to the rest of the agenda, come back to this. Because procedurally, we should either vote or move it on. And it is a roll of the dice. I don't know if it changed any minds, I mean, that, the email was kind of damning.
Yeah. No, no, I understand, absolutely. And like I said, the good thing is, we could never get awarded this permit without passing that final inspection as well. And if we kick this out for another two weeks, I doubt we can get it done, get someone out there and get everything done within the two weeks timeframe anyways. So then we'd have maybe a push to four to six weeks, and then we're just pushing it out even further. So I, I'd like to just make that two-minute phone call, if you guys don't mind, we can come back to this. Like, I don't mind waiting for, until you guys are available for me. If I don't, if I don't get an answer on the phone call, going like a villain who's not a justice, that's okay with me.
I suggest there be a motion, a second, and a majority vote to move item one to the end of new business.
That's what I was going to do.
Ms. Schaubert?
So moved, as Mr. Russell stated.
Motion for Mr. Schaubert, second for Mr. Barr, to move item one to the end of business.
New business.
End of.
So we move to that.
It and me.
Yes, sir. We have to take a vote.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Rattler?
No.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
No.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Harsmith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Seven-two.
Okay. Move that. Okay. Next matter of business is item number two under Old Business Ordinance 2025-029, law director contract.
Ordinance making appropriation mandated by Ohio Revised Code 5705.44, previously approved by Ordinance 2024-122, and the below-listed line item for the year ending December 31st, 2025.
Uh, Mr. Barr? Well, this came from?
Finance.
Oh. It's placed on the council agenda.
Yeah. Ms. Lang, do you have something? Specifically on this?
Does this come out of finance?
No, no. It was placed on the agenda the last meeting.
Right.
Madam President, if I may?
Sure.
So as I expressed at the first reading two weeks ago, or however many weeks ago it's been, this is actually re-appropriating money that was appropriated in the last year. It should have been in the budget for this year, but errantly wasn't included as a carryover contractual obligation. So I would ask council to suspend the rules and appropriate this money that was already appropriated last year.
Mr. Schaubert?
Could we go into a brief executive session and discuss this pending lawsuit, get an update on it?
You're moving to enter into executive session to speak with the city attorney regarding pending, threatened, or imminent litigation?
Yes.
I have no problem with that.
Okay. That is my motion.
The motion go into executive session, and a second by Mr. Barr.
Who's staying in the room?
Council, all administration is welcome, as well as the clerk. Does that cover everyone? Okay.
All right, let's take it off.
Uh, Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Rattler?
No.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
No.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
No.
Mr. Harsmith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Six-three.
Again. Six-three. Oh. Right, executive session. Beginning at?
Then I'll turn the camera back on.
All right. We're back into session at seven fifteen. To address Ordinance 2025-029. Mr. Rollins?
Motion to suspend the free reading requirement.
Sorry.
And a motion to suspend the free readings, and a second from Mr. Smith. All right.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Rattler?
No.
Mr. Schaubert?
No.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Harsmith?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Seven-two.
Can I move some?
No, seven-two.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm counting you, and I don't know why.
That motion carries.
Madam President, unless you overruled the motion, it did not get one minority vote.
Over.
Madam, Madam President?
Yeah.
If I may, so that Mr. Rattler just referred to how you follow precedent in the past.
I can challenge the rule.
In, yeah, in regards to Roberts Rules of Order, which refers to when a legislative body comes together and the minority doesn't vote to suspend, that the minority is at a disadvantage because he or she could have been surprised by the item, needed more time to deal with the item. I would urge the chair to reach the decision that in this particular case, the seven-two vote is sufficient to suspend the rules at the second reading, given the fact that the minority member was present at the first reading, has had an additional two weeks to look, to deal with the matter, and it's not a matter of any kind of surprise or inability to be prepared for the vote. For that reason, I would suggest the president declare that the motion passed and the rules have been suspended.
I will do so, but I do declare that the motion has passed and the rules have been suspended, basically for that reason, because it's not new to us. Ms. Barr?
Motion to adopt.
A motion to adopt, Mr. Barr, and a second from Mr. Ralph Smith. Ms. Rattler?
You know, I won't say anything in an executive session that I won't say in public. And again, I think it is ridiculous that the city will enter into contract with a law firm that has a partner that people on this council know does not hold honesty and does not hold integrity when he is in the courtroom conducting business. And why we would get ourselves roped in to a law firm that expects that out of their partners, who is financially, who is financially tied to this retainer. And also, he's a county employee and a big operative in the Republican Party. But hey, look at the numbers. So that's who we're going to go with. So, you know, I, I think that we are doing ourselves and the citizenry a huge disservice.
Anything else from council? Okay, don't take the room?
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Rattler?
No.
Mr. Schaubert?
No.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
No.
Mr. Harsmith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Six-three.
Six-three. Right, executive session. Beginning at?
Then I'll turn the camera back on.
All right. We're back into session at seven fifteen. To address Ordinance 2025-029. Mr. Rollins?
Motion to suspend the free reading requirement.
Sorry.
And a motion to suspend the free readings, and a second from Mr. Neff.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Rattler?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Harsmith?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. To adopt, resolution 2025-029, adopt the citizen participation.
Resolution to adopt the citizen participation plan in conformity with the requirements of the community development block grant.
Uh, this comes out of your committee, Mr. Smith, Mr. Harsmith?
Uh, yes, and I, I noticed that we've removed the declaring the emergency. So I would suggest this be the first reading.
Set, I said, and then?
Does it want to be one or not? Now, if I remember correctly, we didn't need them both. It didn't need to go into effect within thirty days, or within one day, it could take thirty. But I don't, and she's not here to double check, but I am pretty sure that she didn't want this to be, like, a ten-weeks-out. You know, I think we're at a point where we should do one or the other. We could put the emergency or suspend the rules. And always to choose between those two, I would always vote to suspend over the emergency clause. So I will make a motion to suspend.
We have a motion to suspend, and?
Second.
Second from Mr. Neff.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Rattler?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Harsmith?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. To adopt, resolution 2025-029, adopt the citizen participation.
Resolution to adopt the citizen participation plan in conformity with the requirements of the community development block grant.
Uh, this comes out of your committee, Mr. Smith, Mr. Harsmith?
Uh, yes, and I, I noticed that we've removed the declaring the emergency. So I would suggest this be the first reading.
Set, I said, and then?
Does it want to be one or not? Now, if I remember correctly, we didn't need them both. It didn't need to go into effect within thirty days, or within one day, it could take thirty. But I don't, and she's not here to double check, but I am pretty sure that she didn't want this to be, like, a ten-weeks-out. You know, I think we're at a point where we should do one or the other. We could put the emergency or suspend the rules. And always to choose between those two, I would always vote to suspend over the emergency clause. So I will make a motion to suspend.
We have a motion to suspend, and?
Second.
Second from Mr. Neff.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Rattler?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to one. Suspend the rules, Mr. T. Smith?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt from Mr. T. Smith and a second from Mr. Neff. You ready?
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous, and to adopt. Resolution twenty twenty five zero zero. Item number four. Ordinance twenty twenty five zero three zero, rule fifteen, NMC committee rules.
Ordinance amending Marion codified ordinance Title III Legislative Chapter 111.03, committees of council. Section C, Rule fifteen of the codified ordinance of the City of Marion.
Mr. Neff?
This ordinance came out of legislation codes with a two-oh recommendation to approve. Basically, we want to strike out language in Rule fifteen of city council rules and believe it or not, striking out some of the language is going to clear this up and make it less confusing, allows to amend in committee.
Mr. Barr? I just have a question. Obviously, this allows to amend it in committee, but we'll still have to. But things could still be voted down in committee and not make it to council.
Are you asking me?
Your name's on the last list.
I guess Mr. Barr is directing his question towards me. And in committee, I clarified with the law director that by striking this out, all rules of council apply to committees, not just full council. So yeah, so if you want it amended, tabled, whatever it is, yes.
Mr. Barr?
I'll make a motion to suspend the three readings.
I have a question.
We've got three readings.
Okay. Take the second and then your question, second from Mr. Smith. And then your question?
Okay, maybe I'm confused. Are we saying that we can table things in committee?
Yes.
That sounds like yes.
That's what it sounds like.
Yes. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to suspend it.
Other questions?
Oh, sorry.
So if we table in committee, it doesn't, it won't go on to council?
Correct.
This says, "Committee shall be necessary for recommendation of approval, disapproval, or amended of any legislation pending before committee." So once we do one of the three things, it doesn't go on to council? I mean, I thought council had to do one of three things.
Well, I don't recall seeing this when I read this today. All rules of council will apply to committees, is that somewhere blatantly stated? And do you, you know, is that something that you guys, Councilman Schaubert, Councilman Barr, you talked about in your committee or in your writing of this?
So this one, this particular ordinance that we're on was not brought forward by me. I know my name is on it. This was brought forward by Mr. Ralph Smith because the income tax credit was tabled and he thought he should vote for it, and so he was looking for other ways to clarify that you cannot table stuff in committee. And that's how this came about. I'm happy to have my name attached to it, but in committee, and I'll state it again and I'll restate it, even ask law director once again, by striking this language means that committees follow all Roberts rules and rules of council, just like full council. So is that the intent? Because that was what I voted for as the intent coming out of committee.
So from my perspective, this, so the stricken language, I think two sentences were repeat statements. They'd already been stated above and they just restated it with no purpose. So that's two sentences. What, the sentence that was stricken that was causing confusion and conflicted was the sentence that said, "Ordinants shall not be amended in committee." And that's just not a good legislative process that federal government, state government allow for amendments to post legislation in their committees. And I can't, as I've expressed many times before, I can't understand which council, however, long ago, that thought that that was meant, it should be included in the rules to say that legislation should not be amended in committee. So in Roberts rules, if there's not a rule of the City of Marion council, then you look to Roberts rules. Where there's a rule within the rules of the city council, that rule takes precedent. So you're right in regards to Roberts rules applies when there's no other city rule that would apply.
And so...
Excuse me, but I think, I think I may have found it on this sheet. I believe on page two of the type thing with the, with the line that's running through the text we're getting rid of, "All other motions shall require only majority vote," or basically, right, right there, aren't we saying all other motions would include table?
No, so I believe that the last sentence that's stricken that you just referenced that reads, "All other motions shall require only a majority vote in numbers of the committee." That has no meaning in the way we practice in regards to our committees are three people. We haven't had a committee in the whole, which is a whole nother thing. Maybe it was productive thirty, forty years ago, but council generally takes important matters before, as opposed to having two or three committees combined and have a committee go. The point being, this rule, the parts that have been stricken, had reference to requiring a supermajority on just regular motions. Striking that last sentence that you referenced, if the majority's going to rule, majority vote rules, so if there's a committee of three, two in favor are going to succeed. It's as simple as that.
Mr. R. Smith?
I'd like to bring counsel's attention to Rule forty. And Rule forty states that concerns a motion to lay on the table, and it says, "The motion to lay on the table shall require a majority vote of all members elected to council." Doesn't say anything about a committee. I have a problem with two people on a committee determining what the other seven people get the vote on. I think that the people of this city elected council members so that they would have an opportunity to vote and do the right thing. If two people can control that, you might as well forget it.
Mr. Rollins, I'll send your hand up.
Are you?
Mr. Ratliff?
There's three people on every committee, so two people control every single committee that we have. Two people on every single committee controls what this council has. Two people on every committee controls the council agenda. So if you have a problem with one decision that two people made on a particular committee, and if that throws your whole thinking that two people shouldn't control, get, just get rid of committees. Just have a committee of the whole every other Monday, and we, and then two people wouldn't control anything ever. But I think it has worked well for a long time, and that's why you have committees.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, two people control what the council, the way they vote, yea, nay, or no recommendation. But I disagree with two people controlling the fact that council doesn't even get to vote. I mean, you just take the whole council out of it then.
So you're talking about the tabling issue again?
Right, the rule forty.
Mr. Rollins?
So what's the difference if the committee disapproves something, doesn't move it on to council, or tables it? Either way, two people are deciding that that's not going to go to council, correct?
No.
How's that?
Because the, the two people are required to either recommend a yea, a nay, or no recommendation at all. Everything goes...
Two nays doesn't go to council?
No, it goes to council with a no rule.
No, it doesn't. Right here in this rule, that we're, "A majority vote of the members of committee shall be necessary for the recommendation of approval, disapproval, or amendment of any legislation pending before a committee." That's pretty cut and dry.
It's not the way I interpret it.
There's no other way to interpret that, that's English.
Everybody's got a right to interpret things.
Well, how do you interpret that?
The law director said that just two weeks ago. He said, "Members of council interpret things differently."
Well, how do you, how do you interpret disapproval?
I interpret that as a recommendation. You can do a three-zero recommendation to disapprove for council. You can do a two-one. Okay.
Mr. Barr?
I think that serves some clarity. I think Rule forty is the only one that can't be done. It can't make a motion to lay on the table in committee because it says that the majority of vote of all members elected to council. So I think to lay it on the table, that could only happen at full council. Is that the way you guys read that?
Mr. T. Smith?
That's how I'm interpreting that.
I apologize for tabling a tax raise, I will never do it again.
Well, then I would challenge you to bring it forward, back to the table and send on to council.
Will do.
So Mr. Smith can vote for it.
Will do.
You know, people have been sore that they weren't allowed to raise people's taxes for months. They've been sore at Councilman Rollins and I for tabling that in committee for a long time. However, not one person has added anything to council's agenda, which, if you know how to legislate, you know how to do it, bypassing committee that would start this coming January first. But what you were mad at is you wanted to backdate it and backdoor the citizens to raise their taxes to not even be able to let them plan their finances and their, and their, and their taxes, and you wanted to backdate a tax increase on people. And it's just, it is wrong on every single level. So if, if you really, really want it, have it start January first of this coming year. I still won't support it because I think it's completely wrong. But if, if that's, if that's what you want to do, do it. You don't have to change every rule of council because one thing didn't happen the way that you wanted it to.
I was just asking questions for clarification. There's a lot of striking out there. I want to be able to amend in committee.
I do too.
I do. I was just asking for clarification because I know that was another point of confusion.
I have no problem with amendments at all.
I stand by my amendment, I will never table another tax raise again.
My questions had nothing to do with any specific piece of legislation or that. I'm just trying to get clarification.
I want to make sure we have clarification on this recent debate over here, sort of. Majority, this is in what we're talking about doing tonight. "A majority vote of the members of committee shall be necessary for the recommendation of approval, disapproval, or amendment of any legislation pending before a committee." So it, it's, there has to be some kind of, that there's a recommendation to approve, to disapprove, or to amend. And then that goes on to council or no?
Mr. Smith?
I'm reading this as we're striking that out, so that won't apply anymore.
Well, it's, in my copy, it's not stricken. It's the last sentence before the strikeout.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Because it says recommendation.
Approval, disapproval.
Recommendation.
And on this side.
There's no other discussion, I believe I have a motion to suspend.
I second it.
And this, and this council thinks we're ready to suspend readings on this? We're not even sure what it says. I mean, I think a motion maybe to send it back to committee would be much, much more proper.
I wasn't under, just to clarify, I wasn't understanding what her question was, so...
It looks like we've got about four sentences that were double-cut in here.
Somebody wants to make a motion to send it back to committee, I'll rescind my motion to suspend. If you guys want to hash this out in committee, that's not my...
Well, so if I may, so, boy, this is a big circle we're running now. So we send it back to committee. We can't amend the committee. What do we do?
Exactly what you want.
However, you can recommend an amendment to the full council. That's in the rules.
But it's here now, and the full committee agreed with what was sent out, those present. And I believe Mr. Smith, Thaddeus, was there, he would agree that night too. So...
I believe we're ready to suspend rules, send this on, be done with it.
Mr... I'm going to regret this later. We've struck duplicative language, that's a positive step forward. We've struck the sentence that says, "No ordinance resolution shall be amended while in committee." Seems to be a consensus that that's a positive step forward. This does nothing else. A committee, in my opinion, a committee of three, can still table a matter before them by a two-one vote. That's an application of Roberts Rules of Order. So I would urge council to move this, pass it, let's move on to the next debate regarding the rules.
Mr. Barr, would you like to go back and...
I never rescinded.
Okay, I thought I just gave a moment there, I thought it was rescinded, so... Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Barr and a second from Mr. T. Smith to suspend the three readings.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
No.
Mr. Schaubert?
No.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert, just to be clear, did you vote no?
I did, and it's not because I don't agree with the legislation, it's just that this is a rule change, I feel it should go through, that's my only purpose.
Okay. Did you overhear?
Yes, motion to adopt.
We have a motion to enforce the adoption, and a second from Mr. Neff.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
No.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Seven two.
Motion carries seven two.
So for my clarification?
Yes.
This is just like any other ordinance, thirty days after signature?
Moving on to item number five. Ordinance twenty twenty five zero three one, NMC motions, Rule forty-four.
Ordinance amending Marion codified ordinance Title III Legislative Chapter 111.05, motions, I, Rule forty-four of the codified ordinance of the City of Marion.
Legislation in Codes Committee, Mr. Ratliff?
Yes, this came out of Legislation in Codes with a two-oh recommendation to approve. This is adding language to Rule forty-four that will essentially codify that a minority party vote is required to suspend the three reading rule.
Motion to suspend the three readings.
Good luck with the suspend.
Second.
And a second from Mr. Prater. Mr. Rollins?
Point of clarification, if this rule were to change, we would handle this as we did today, it would go, it would be a President's discretion, or a rule of order.
So that's a very good question. Prior to this, the action taken earlier this evening did not have this in the codified rules. So if this was to pass, it would be a codified rule that to suspend three readings would require the minority to vote yes. So that's important. I'd urge you not to pass this.
Any other discussion?
I'm going to second the motion.
Yes, Mr. Prater did.
Mr. Prater?
Sorry.
Mr. Schaubert?
Mr. Schaubert?
Mr. Russell, could you please elaborate a little bit more on why you would urge us to not pass this?
What occurred earlier is exactly what the intent of the Roberts Rules of Order intended in regards to allowing the minority to have an ability to consider the matter brought before the legislative body, have appropriate amount of time to influence other members to changes suggested. However, if this rule is codified, any minority member in the future can force every ordinance to go three readings, and there would never be a suspension of the rules if the minority held out to the end. That's not the point of Roberts Rules of Order on this particular subject. The point of that rule is to enable a minority member to be up to speed as other...
to pass. You know, I mean, I think from an outsider, I know how the other party works. And when you're on the outs with your party, I think you understand what it's like to be in the minority as well. And you are not, and you are not in the know as much as somebody who's not in the outs. So I would hope that you would understand how a minority party feels.
Technical difficulties, folks. Let's hold on a second.
I don't know what it's doing. Jacob's got it.
Apologize, I have no clue what happened.
Here, Collins, did you contact Jacob?
Jacob's got ahold of it.
Can we take a recess for five minutes to work out technical difficulties?
The court recorder is still recording.
I have no objection to a five-minute recess.
Or? Or you have a motion on the floor?
We have a motion and a second on the floor.
Oh, that's right.
And it seems the debate is ceased.
Yeah, it's called.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
No.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion carries. Just suspend the three readings. Page one. Mr. Barr?
Motion to adopt.
And Mr. R. Smith, a second?
Mr. Barr?
No.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
No.
Mr. Prater?
No.
Mr. R. Smith?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
No.
Mr. Neff?
No.
Motion carries. Six to three. You saying, what do you want to say?
I don't know if Facebook's broadcasting or not. Jacob had remote access to the computer and was working on that issue.
Is it still? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number six. Ordinance 2025-032, Evans Road Vacation.
Ordinance vacating part of a public alley 13 feet in width along the east and south sides of Law 8867 in Marion, Osgood, addition to the City of Marion, as reported in Act Book Number Three, Page 104, Marion County, State of Ohio, and retaining permanent easement rights.
Mr. Barr, this comes out of your committee?
Yeah, the applicant, Mr. Johnson, is here. We don't really have anything to add. Him and the neighbors have come to an agreement on what they're going to do with the alley when it's segmented halfway. He has a letter, certified letter, or notarized letter from the neighbor of what they're going to do. And that'll be up to them to file that with the, where are they going to file that? Mr. Rollins?
County reporter, I'd say.
County reporter, yeah. Okay. If anybody has any questions, the applicant is here, though. But if they don't.
Advertisements have gone out, and the public hearing will be the 28th of April.
Has to be a first reading. This has to go three reads.
Yeah.
And I think if anybody had any questions, we're going to ask Mr. Johnson now because we'd like to be able to tell him he doesn't have to show up for the second reading. If we don't have questions, it just have, come back for the third reading for the vote. Does that sound fair, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah. Do you have some questions?
I saw your handle.
What day did you say the public hearing was going to?
April 28th. That would be the date of this public hearing and the four zoning changes we've got floating around.
And we'll do the additional dates, pass it up. Or is there any more dates to pass it, 28th of April?
28th will be the last one.
And we'll vote.
Any questions?
Of course, I need.
We've been to this first reading. We'll move on to item number seven. Ordinance 2025-032.
Ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service to prepare plans and specifications, advertise for bids, and enter into all necessary contracts for the 2025 Street Resurfacing Project 251R in the City of Marion, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Barr?
Yeah, this is the annual resurfacing project. The engineer, Mr. Shetler, had provided a list of projects or streets that it has to come from, and that you will be dwindling that down. Will we receive updated when that's dwindled down?
Yes.
So we could let our constituents know?
Yeah. Assistant engineer myself will be going through the list to finalize this left street based on our budget. We have to, and also try to spread out the limits as best we can.
And just for clarification, that's, you have to work within your budget, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just have one question, really. What does the process look like, so that everybody can kind of understand it, for how you choose which streets to do?
Yeah, we have a list of streets that come in from various places, through the sewer department, up and down, recommend some streets that be repaired. We get calls from residents that have streets that say, hey, this needs to be resurfaced. We have a long list of streets. And then we get together with the sewer department, and supervisors, and assistant engineer himself, and some of the two inspectors in our department. And we sit down, kind of go through the streets that we think are the most important ones to be done. And then kind of see what we have to work with, money-wise, and where they're located. And come up with a final list for this year.
Okay. Thank you.
I can't recall. Can you? Chestnut Street on that list?
It's on the list. It's, I don't know if it will be done this year.
Okay. I was just curious if it was on the list.
Mayor Phil?
Very popularly. Has the mayor consulted on that? Have I been?
Have you been?
Yeah.
I, this is my first year doing it, so I don't want to ask you yet.
So I do not take part in the list, and they decide that on their own. So although I'd like to fulfill every constituent's request to do their street, it really doesn't go to contact me, other than say. I can let him know that, hey, you know, Dover Street's bad. And I know last week, I think Chestnut Street was mentioned, it's been like that for 90 days. We got some streets that have been like that for 10 years. So that list is very long, and some of those streets go way back, a lot longer than 90 days. So it's all up to them, on what they decide, and what the streets department decide. I don't have any part in that.
And I'd like to add, too, that Aqua is doing their, it let up campaign, as you call it, where they're replacing all the, a lot of the lead pipes in the city. And Chestnut Street is one of the streets that's why it's all tore up right now. And then we'll be paving all those patches here once the gas bubble ends up.
Thank you, Mr. Shetler.
Mr. Barr?
I'll make a motion to suspend the three readings.
You have the motion to suspend the three readings? And a second from Mr. Rollins?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, are you ready?
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion carries. Just suspend the three readings. Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
No.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion carries. Just suspend the three readings. Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
No.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Just suspend the three readings. Page one. Mr. Barr?
Motion to adopt.
And Mr. R. Smith, a second?
Mr. Barr?
No.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
No.
Mr. Prater?
No.
Mr. R. Smith?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
No.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion carries. Just suspend the three readings. Page nine. Ordinance 2025-036, office institutional changes to Code 2025, ordinance for opioid treatment.
Ordinance amending zoning code 1139.01, use regulations and O.I. and institutional district to include opioid treatment programs and office-based opioid treatment facilities.
Mr. Prater?
Yeah, this comes out of zoning and annexation. This has been, this would be like one of the first readings. On April 28th, it was suggested by Ms. Evelyn that we vote on all these things at the same time. So I just want to move this as a first.
That's why it's all tore up right now. I think we'll be paving all those patches here once the gas bubble runs out.
Thank you, Mr. Shalberg. I'll make a motion to suspend the three readings.
We have a motion to suspend the three readings and a second from Mr. Rollins?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, are you ready?
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shalberg?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prager?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion carries. Suspend the three readings. Mr. T. Smith?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. And Mr. Rollins?
Second.
Second.
I think we have a question.
No questions, Mr. Ratliff?
So I've never heard this asked yet. No, it just popped into my head. So let's say Chestnut Street, and it's all tore up right now, and Aqua was going to come and put a bunch of money in it to pave back what they have tore up. Is there any way or thought about when this happens to partner with a utility like Aqua to redo a street and have Aqua pay us what they would have paid to have it redone, and we could get more streets paved that way?
Not to my knowledge. In this case, these repairs are significant to these streets for this project. So that's something that we can consider because at some point it makes more sense to resurface, to redo the whole street than to just...
Correct. Because it's really tore up.
Oh, I know. They're all... This project's huge for them. So yeah, I mean, that's worthwhile conversation to have with them and how we can might be able to do that or work with them to make that happen if it makes sense.
Okay.
That's something you can look into, though.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shalberg?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prager?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Next is item number eight, 2025-035.
Ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract with Kirk Brothers for the Long-Term Control Plan Phase Two and Three, CSO Improvements Project for the City of Marion, Ohio, appropriating necessary funds and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Barr?
Yeah, it comes out of Streets and Sewers with a 2O recommendation to approve as part of our Long-Term Control Plan. It's federally mandated, so we have to go through with it. It's for the end of Catalina, which is Cinder Hill, as it's affectionately called. It's going to be a huge retention tank, for lack of a better term, to help hold that when we have big rain events, to hold that off until the plant can keep up. And then Phase Three is out at Holland Road. It's a flapper valve to do about the same, right, to hold it back until the plant can process it. And Mr. Ice is here, if anybody has any questions.
I believe in committee, we had, or somebody said that they had received, I think, one or two bids on that, expecting another one.
Yeah, so we received, I'm not a superintendent of water control, we received two bids. The low bid was with Kirk Brothers at 15,509,500. The next bid was 17 million, 700,000. The engineer's estimate was 20 million, 500,000. So we were five million below what they estimated.
Mr. Ice, and you found a $4 million loan forgiveness grant?
Yeah, so we were awarded the maximum dollar amount from the EPA. It's a $4 million forgiveness. If we can get this approved, it'll go to the loan, and that's a piece of it. I had to attend a virtual meeting next week on how to satisfy everything for that. They told us that we'll get that. So the total loan will be in the 18 and a half million range, and 4 million of that will be principal forgiveness, so...
And this is all paid back out of the enterprise funds?
Yes, along the same tape.
No questions.
Couple of questions for me. Has this been planned to spend the 15,5, or will people's bills be affected?
This has been part of the sewer plan that was approved. I think the rate increase was approved, I believe, in '17. So it was a 10-year plan of a 5 percent. So that'll go through 2027. More than likely, that'll be evaluated here in the next year or two. I'm sure there will need to be an additional increase scheduled. I can't answer what that would be yet.
And then, from your position, is what we're doing 100% what's needed or what is mandated?
It is 100% what is mandated. So what position do you all come from? Environmentally, this is a very important thing. We are preventing combined stormwater, sanitary and storm, from entering the waters of the state. So that is very important, in my opinion. Knowing that it is an old system, it is a very difficult thing to accomplish. We have miles and miles... I think we're around 700 miles of sanitary and storm, if I remember. We're talking millions, if not billions, of dollars to replace all of that. So these are the things that are their ways to do that in the short term, so we can hopefully continue to do these projects that will improve things over time. But we just can't do it all at once.
And I ask that because in our current gutting of the federal government, we're not sure what departments are going to last and what departments aren't.
Agreed.
And so my thought was, in your opinion, you're the expert over me, for sure, if this isn't 100% what's needed versus this is what is being mandated on a division of government that may not even exist, or that may not exist to give us our $4 million forgiveness that we think that we're going to get?
Four million's coming from the state.
Okay.
That is a positive. When it comes to... This is something I do not feel will change. This is combined sewers. It's been a big issue since the Clean Water Act was enacted in '72. They wanted to eliminate these types of things. The things that'll get kicked down the road will be different chemicals that be removed. That'll go to enforcement on industries, changing in processes and stuff. Those are the things that might get kicked down the road. These things will... They'll stay.
Okay.
Mr. Shalberg?
Yeah, and I was going to ask this at the end of the meeting, but you kind of said that the rate increase will be reevaluated maybe this year or sometime within a year. I think it hit because our bills showed a 5 percent increase.
Every year, you get a 5 percent increase.
Okay.
Every February 1st, there is a council group, 5 percent increase over a 10-year...
10-year period, yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay, gotcha.
And that's what expires in 2027.
Right. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Mr. Rollins?
I make a motion to suspend three readings.
A motion to suspend three? Mr. Rollins?
Second, please.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shalberg?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prager?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Rollins?
Motion to adopt.
A motion to adopt from Mr. Rollins and a second from Mr. R. Smith. Are you ready?
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shalberg?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prager?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number nine, ordinance 2025-036, office institutional changes to code 2025 ordinance for opioid treatment.
Ordinance amending zoning code 1139.01, use regulations and OI and institutional district to include opioid treatment programs and office-based opioid treatment facilities.
Mr. Prager?
Yep, this comes out of zoning and annexation. This has been... This would be like one of the first readings. On April 28th, it was suggested by Ms. Evelyn that we vote on all these things at the same time. So I just want to move this as a first reading, and then on the... This, we have a public hearing. And that was the purpose of the fact of the reading, is that we can have public hearings on this. So we'll move it to the 28th of April.
No, we'll just have a first reading.
Yeah, first reading, and then it'll fall out on the 28th. Yeah, and a second, and it'll fall out on the 28th.
Leaving it at first reading.
Orders to authorize the Safety Director to apply for firehouse subgrants to the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation and accept and administer the grant and declaring an emergency. Specifically, this one's for the fire department.
This came out of Finance Committee with a 3O recommendation. It is a grant with a no-mash. I believe the 45,000 is going to be split if we get that between the fire and the police.
So we're actually at point 13,000. The 45 is to talk. If they were set to guideline is between 15 to 25,000. So both the police and fire decided to stay around that just to have better chances of getting accepted. So the police is 23,000 and fire department is 7,000.
Any other questions?
No match.
No match.
Motion to suspend.
Second. We have a motion to suspend the three readings and a second from Mr. T. Smith.
Come in. Oh, Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shalberg?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prager?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion to suspend. Carries. And Mr. T. Smith?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Mr. T. Smith, then a second from Mr. R. Smith. Are you ready?
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shalberg?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prager?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 11, ordinance 2025-038. Five...
Yes, ma'am. Orders to authorize the Safety Director to apply for a firehouse subgrants to the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation and then accept and administer the grant and declaring an emergency. Specifically, this one is for the police department.
So this is the same as the last one, only this one is for the police department?
Mr. Ratliff? I had a question that I thought of after committee. A few months ago, we were told that, I believe that the police department got a grant, and that radios were not going to be supported anymore. If you remember, other council people...
Network, network.
Okay, that the network was not going to be. And I think we... I was under the impression we purchased new radios.
New Motorola?
Yes. Is this... Did we not get those, and is this going to replace that, that we're not going to spend that money, or...
My understanding is, I think the amount that you're referring to, Ms. R. is that it was an upgrade, like an infrastructure upgrade within the software in order for the radios to... It was like a patch, basically, to allow those radios to work. The grants, I think, in this instance, are looking to purchase new radios because the radios that we have are becoming outdated.
Okay.
Mr. Rollins?
Just to shed some clarity, so the repeaters prior to this year could be analog. We had to switch. So all radio systems had to be digital by, I think, the end of 2025.
Okay. So that was for the system, not for the radios?
For the system, not the radios themselves. We had to do all the programs as well at work.
Okay.
Mr. T. Smith?
Motion to suspend. The three readings will...
Thank you. We have a motion to suspend three readings and a second from Mr. Prager.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shalberg?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prager?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion carries. Suspend the three readings. Mr. R. Smith?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. And Mr. T. Smith? The second.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shalberg?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prager?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Item number 12, ordinance 2025-039 appropriations.
Orders to making adjustments to appropriations for the year ending December 31st, 2025.
Ms. Lang?
This came out of Finance Committee with a 3O recommendation, and this court light is available for any additional questions that anybody may have tonight.
And last week, we went over what those were for, payment and specific questions. These are just some cleanup, some cleanup to resurfacing, as we passed earlier, just kind of adjusting their budget based on funds that we have and other buckets of money to kind of do some cleanup and for, you know, some additional appropriations. But if there's any specific questions, I'd like to answer those. Mr. Shalberg?
The ordinance before us, and maybe my memory's wrong, but the acquisition was supposed to be removed or separate?
I wouldn't need to be moved.
I thought that was the discussion.
That is. That's just appropriations and planning to make the purchase, which is the way it is.
I think I recall that being discussed, and if there was some additional or something, they would come back or...
Yeah. I mean, this, I believe, is all what we will need for this year.
This should get it started.
And based on cash that was left over from last year, when we actually started collecting money, we had over a million dollars of care over from last year because we didn't spend nearly what we... We didn't make the purchase last year. So that, those funds will be in there, plus we got our tax payment the first half last Thursday. So that should have enough to cover that and would be possible by the end of the year.
Okay. So on the acquisition, and did we ever have a cash flow issue? Because it was brought to my attention that some bills were paid selectively...
Completely separate fund. This was a part of that, and we moved money west end of February or...
So bills were selectively being paid?
No, no, no.
Oh, because that was my question.
No, no, it's not my job. All I'm saying is that I've... Those appropriations that I'm asking that are on there are based on cash that we have on hand or in some form of one of our multiple checking accounts to pay for that going on Thursday.
Okay, so whoever's...
The acquisition money is from levy money.
Right, right.
Approved, and that money is set aside in some fund.
That's what I...
There's enough money in there to accommodate...
Right. That's what I was told, and that's what I believed. But then it was brought to my attention that, and I hope the auditor chimes in, that some bills were selectively paid to save cash for that acquisition.
There was a prioritization plan put in place in order to put that back for the acquisition, yes.
Could you... I don't know what that means. Could you...
So basically, what we did is there was a stack of bills, and we went down and said, "Okay, employees are being paid first and foremost, regardless of what's happening. That's whether it's payroll or contractors and special duty, any employee of the city is getting paid first, then it's utility bills, then it's credit cards, then it's purchases and then service contracts." So there's a prioritization plan put in place in order to put bills to be paid.
So there was a cash flow issue because we had to triage bills?
It's not necessarily a cash flow issue. It's just because we were keeping money back so we could prepare for this acquisition.
Okay, couple of questions. When you said "we" had a plan, can you define "we"?
The internal auditor went through the bills and prioritized each one of them, confirmed with me that this was okay to do, and that's how we went about it.
Okay, so 100% auditor's office decisions?
As far as I'm aware, yeah.
Okay. So now we just heard tonight that there's enough money in the fund that we have collected of income tax that people voted on to purchase the acquisition. So why would we need to prioritize credit card bills and other bills to have money to do it if we had the money there?
Because you're thinking GL accounts versus bank accounts. There's enough money in the GL account, but we had to make sure we had enough money in the general checking account to actually go ahead and make that purchase.
So that's a cash flow problem, is it not?
Because it was versus sitting in investments. So in order for us to... That way, we wouldn't have to pull money out of the investments. So it's not a cash flow problem. We had the cash there. We were just maintaining the cash in order so that we could make the actual purchase.
Okay, so when people vote on a tax increase, and we get money in, then we just... Do we co-mingle those monies? Or is it truly set in a separate pot, money that we get in, and then that's money that we can spend?
Everything that's not used for the next six to 12 months goes into the investments. It's separated out in New World, it's into each fund, but everything, actual cash in our pocket goes into the investments that we're not going to use for the next 12 months.
So, because I believe that through years of co-mingling, the city cannot sit here and tell what we have in the general fund versus what we have in enterprise funds. Because we co-mingle monies, and I think if we co-mingle these, we're not going to be able to tell what we have in the money that people voted on that's supposed to support safety forces. And I would assume that if people voted to put money, to put extra money towards something, that it would set in a pot by itself, and whatever income that that money generated would also go towards the cause that the people voted for, they're paying their extra money for. But the way that we're doing it, it wouldn't.
I have a question.
Yes.
We have another question from Mr. Shalberg.
Yeah, I'll explain it real quick because I saw your confusion. So all the money that went into investments, how do we determine what belongs to general fund and what belongs to enterprise fund?
That's still a question, and I'm obviously working my way through it. But I guess my question is, are you proposing that we have a separate checking account for each of those funds that we have special revenues for?
Well, I would assume that if we have a special revenue fund, or if we have a fund like that people voted to a tax increase, that that money would be separate.
There's a revenue line that shows what money comes into that, but then it may go into a bigger pot of investment money. My understanding...
Correct.
The dumb guy's sitting up here. But that is... That's how I understand it. It has its own line because I'm able to see how much has come in in levy money.
Correct.
And that money is brought in as a revenue, and it sits there until we expend it out for the reason of the fire department.
Okay, so my question on that is if somebody pays a dollar in tax, and it goes into an investment and draws 4% interest, after a year, that's now a dollar four. Is there a dollar that we count in the fund for the fire department, or is there a dollar four?
Yeah, I'm not sure that's how city finance works, but in other cities...
I think that we probably should be able to do that, but we have not been able to. But that is something that we'll be working towards. It should be. We should be able to say, "This enterprise fund had this much investment, and this is how much interest they should have earned, and they should get credit for."
Correct.
I believe that. I'm just saying that in a year...
We're not there yet.
I can't yet. We'll continue to work on that. I've gone through all the funds, and I have a much better feeling of what's available in each of the funds in order to work on something, but...
That's kind of gold, because that was brought up initially to us.
I mean, we... This has been talked about for a long, long, long time, prior to Auditor McGinnis. So I mean, it's not... I'm not saying that it's her, but I think now we've added another fund, and if we're doing the same exact thing, we're going to have... We're just making the problem bigger instead of making the problem at least even stay the same.
Well, I would intend to try to work with our investment and Tommy on with the guy that we work with to try to help maybe have us break that out, and at least be able to go forward. They have, "Here's how much we have in here. Here's what the balances are in the funds." How, you know, that way we can at least start to break that out. I don't know how other cities... I know there are other cities that I've seen them, so maybe I need to contact them and say, "Hey, how do you do that?" So that we can work on that.
Right. Because, you know, because we said earlier tonight that we're going to reevaluate close to the end of this year, the sewer rates. And so if, say we have $17 million in investments, if we don't even know how much of that is sewer fund and how much of it is not, how do you evaluate if you have to increase people's sewer bills if you don't even know how much money that you have?
I don't know how much sewer money they have in their fund. I don't know how much interest they earn. Make that clarified. If you've got to look at funds set 502, I can tell you, I just worked through it last week and got some things cleared out. So it's actually a little bit healthier than what the fund report is showing. So as I've been working through it, I know generally how much is in there in cash. I just don't know how much interest they've earned, and that's what we need to get to. They deserve to have part of the interest because we can only keep so much money in our checking account that isn't collateralized.
Correct.
That's why we have to put things in these other investment accounts or liquid accounts so that we have it, make sure that it's FDIC insured. There's a certain amount that we can have in each account that they'll cap our store. So that is a goal, and we will continue working on that. I've seen a couple of cities that have paid for additional investments to their city using those revenues. So I'd like to find out how to do it. What are we doing wrong? How can we fix that? Thank you. Mr. Shalberg?
So maybe it was answered, and it just blew over my head. But I'm trying to figure out, because originally on the acquisition, we said we had the money, we knew where the cash was coming from.
Yeah, funds in 19.
And so I'm trying to see how that's tied to triaging paying invoices.
And that really isn't what the triage... Part of the issue...
And I know it's not your job, so you don't feel obligated to answer.
But part of the issue, and I was on the tip of the knee, so I feel like I can at least try to help explain it as well, is at the end of the year, we did have additional expenses that we have, bonds, and we should plan for that. I can tell you that the internal auditor myself has been working on the cash flow. Now we just need to separate out enterprise versus general fund, because I think that helps the cause, because I need to know where our leak is. Is it general fund is causing the problem, or is it enterprise? We need to make sure we're helping on both sides.
So you have a working, like, cash flow analysis?
We're working on it, yes. Chelsea and I have been working on a cash flow analysis for 2025. Right now, it's combined as all cash. So now Chelsea and I are trying to separate it into enterprise funds versus general fund. But I've been kind of working on a bunch of projects.
Can you share that? Is it ready to share?
It's not quite ready, but as soon as I have it ready, I would bring it to you guys so you guys could see it as well. That's the goal we're trying to get to, so we know, "Hey, generally, we bring in $3.5 million." And we typically hear our expenses in less than a repay month. Here's our general expenses that we have. But I do want to separate that out, enterprise funds versus general fund, so that we can see that as a whole. And that is a work in progress. We're probably about 70% into it. I just need to have time to separate it. I've been working on a couple of other projects, specifically making sure that we have funding to fund the sewer project that we discussed tonight. So I've been working very closely to make sure that we have all our debt schedules, so we can make sure how much of our loans would be supposed to be, because on phase one, like, the first 10 payments were lower, then it's going to go up. How much does it go up? When does that start taking up debt? How does that affect our cash flow in addition to phase three thing brought to you guys? So I've been working on a lot of those. But just so you understand, we needed to determine what our cash needs were. That's why we were working on the cash flow, so we know how much we need to ask for when we were working with the... much we need to ask for when we were working with the, the investment board group, so we would know how much to pull, and that took a little bit of time, so the time we were taking to figure that out, we were trying to do a little bit of making sure everything was getting paid, that had to get paid, so we'd worked at the process, but it was a small gap while we were working through the process.
Okay, so there was.
But cash was given to us, tax money came in last Thursday, everything else had been paid, we're up to.
Already, Jose. So there was a brief period of time.
A brief period.
And when you say pooled cash, what does that mean?
Pooled cash, we, we had to liquidate some cash out of our investments, which is why we put it there, because we can't use, if we don't have an immediate need, and it's more than the dollar amount that they will collateralize, or the FDIC insurance, we have to put it somewhere so it's safe, and that's, we had money in our investments that was already matured, matured, so it was sitting there, we just had to meet as a group to allow that money to get moved over. There's still a little bit more there, but plenty, I mean, it's, of those, we only took the money that was already matured. When you're looking at your investments, that, think that, you know, half that fully matured, those are still sitting there. Does that? Thank you.
Questions at counsel for this ordinance?
One more question from me, and I asked this on committee, and I don't remember the answer. The $1.3 million, is that for one building or two?
I believe it's either two, but we don't have all the details of them, second building, yet.
Speaking of the acquisition, maybe at the end of this meeting, could we get an executive session and get an update on that transaction? Would that be fair?
I'm not sure you need an executive session. We should close Thursday.
Okay, okay.
We're set to close Thursday.
I didn't know if we were still hanging up.
If anything happens, we're good to go and everything, and there's been a lot of work that I can explain after that, after Thursday, but we're, we're to the point now where we're supposed to close Thursday.
Great. Thank you. Questions at counsel for?
Do we have a motion to suspend? I'm not even sure where we're at. I would love to make a motion to suspend the, the free reading rule.
Thank you, Mr. Rollins.
Yeah.
And Mr. Bargi, if you could?
You can give it to Mr. Bargi.
Right, right. Mr. Rollins and Mr. Bargi, okay. You're ready.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Teesman?
Yes.
Mr. Crater?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Are they out of order?
I'm a little more confused, but I think I'm, I'll motion to.
That motion carried, yes, so.
Okay.
Motion to adopt. And Mr. R. Smith, that's the second.
Yeah.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Teesman?
Yes.
Mr. Crater?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Are they out of order?
I'm a little more confused, but I think I'm, I'll motion to.
That motion carried, yes, so.
Okay.
Motion to adopt. And Mr. R. Smith, that's the second.
Yeah.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Teesman?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Are they out of order?
I'm a little more confused, but I think I'm, I'll motion to.
That motion carried, yes, so.
Okay.
Motion to adopt. And Mr. R. Smith, that's the second.
Yeah.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Teesman?
Yes.
Mr. Crater?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Are they out of order?
I'm a little more confused, but I think I'm, I'll motion to.
That motion carried, yes, so.
Okay.
Motion to adopt. And Mr. R. Smith, that's the second.
Yeah.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Teesman?
Yes.
Mr. Crater?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Nothing, just two matters not on the agenda.
No, no, no.
Oh, we're back to number one.
Number one. I remembered you were back there.
I appreciate that answer. It's been of immense help. So our decision is to not move, guys. We would like to continue into a fourth hearing. That will allow us some time to hopefully complete all of the required permits that are outstanding, to, to give you guys some updates. Funny enough, when I spoke to the client, she actually responded to Van, I believe it is, Van. Van, there's a Michelle and a Madison wording on that as well, sent back an email to, to Van explaining where we are currently. I have a, an email from Doug Calh, who's also the Marion Fire City Department. And lastly, it looks like we have an architect, Mark Leckie. So the, the client is, made some progress towards it now. I do wish I would have done prior to arriving today, I was unaware until it was brought forward to me. So we would like to, to schedule for a fourth hearing, if that is appropriate. I guess.
How much time do you need?
Realistically, I'd like to say, because I, I don't want to appear here again without having it completed. I shouldn't need more than, let's say, six weeks maybe? Eight weeks tops? I, I think that, that should allow us to.
Make point seven.
I don't, I don't even necessarily know if it'll take six weeks, I just don't want to arrive at this committee again without.
Ms. Lang?
Can, do we have to set a date, or can they call the clerk?
Yes. You have to set a date, sir.
You have to set a date?
If, on top of that, if you set a date certain, I would say six weeks from now, we can, if I call earlier, four weeks from now, is he able to get on prior?
No, there's. Matt, did you have a date? May, May what?
May 12th is the, would be six weeks out, May 27th would be eight weeks out.
If I may, clerk, or, or, President. So we, there is an option, a date certain, that would force you to get everything done within that timeframe, or there's another option, we could table it. You come to us when you're done, if it's in a week, two weeks, three weeks, and then we can put it, pull it from the table and put it on our, I see our law director shaking his head.
That's not accurate. That kills.
No, it does not kill it, so you need to learn the rules of counsel. When you table something, you have the opportunity to remove it from the table.
That's a debate for another day. I strongly urge the council to move the second, and move this issue to May 12.
12.
Make 12, so we have our date certain, and we can debate tabling and committee at the next committee.
I care less. Is there any detriment to us if I call before the 12th, of course, and I'm like, I say, hey, 27th, actually, it will be done and completed, is that a problem to try to move it or not?
Yeah, we can't move it. Yeah, it'll, it'll be the 12th.
If that works, that, that can certainly impact in very much of our lives.
Do we have to move on?
Yeah.
Ms. Lang?
Make a motion then to move it to date certain, to May 12, 2025.
We have a motion to move it to a date certain, May 12, from Ms. Lang, and a second from Mr. Teesman.
My other question, do we have a certain amount of time to act on an application? I was thinking that from previous ones, but maybe not.
I haven't, as the clerk indicated, he hasn't, and we're doing it at the request of the applicant, so I don't see if there's any potential issue.
My concern would be that the holder of the applicant review license decides to sell it to somebody else.
That's, that's been a reoccurring question that we received, as you can imagine, and we tell them, of course, you know, the three hearings, the process that we're going through. Yes, that, that's correct, Matt, it's, it's a gamble of two, if the seller is going to be, obviously, and hold the permit for us until then, I have no intention of, I do want, so there's no agreement as of last week, but if, if they do end up pulling that somewhere quicker, I would obviously, of course, try to look for another one. If I wasn't successful on that date, of course, I would, of course, counsel, what you're saying. As presently right now, our deal is.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to accept.
Mr. Barr?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
We have a motion in a second.
Motion of, of date certain of May 12th.
To move this to a date.
Yes.
That was a vote yes?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
No.
Mr. Schaubert?
No.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Teesman?
Yes.
Mr. Crater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
No.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Gary, six, three. Okay, there's two matters not on the agenda. There are none?
Is there any update with payroll?
It's still ongoing. Payroll happened this week, so.
Okay, I know we had an address in committee that you were going to reach out to a previous one-two, to see if she was interested, has that happened, and is she?
It has not, I'll be honest with you.
Okay.
I just wanted to follow up on that conversation that we had back in, you remember right back when we originally started talking about that, we had also talked about Clement Nelson and them sending somebody to do payroll. We actually had a name of the subject, and it was chosen not to do that. The auditor's office felt they could do it on their own, and I know that takes up a lot of her time, so that offer's still out there, I mean, I'm sure we could go back to Clement's house, and if needed, to get somebody here to do payroll between now and then, but we've also gotten to the point, I think, where we'll have our clerk in place that can start helping with that process, hopefully, and maybe taking some of the load off of hers, so she can do her other auditor stuff.
Do you know what the cost of Clement Nelson was?
$75 an hour.
Yeah, it was.
Holy cow.
That's why I was declined.
And that was like, originally an emergency to get us through a couple of weeks until something happened, but they managed to make it through.
Other matters?
If I may ask the, the auditor, in finding this committee, you said that you was going to make a call to New World or something to run, because you got this block of numbers that are holding up all, everything, and you were supposed to call by Friday.
What did you just?
And some report, you're testing some report or something, where are we at with that?
That did not get accomplished, because we were in the middle of working with ADP analysis and things like that Thursday and Friday. That is on my list of things to do. I do have an email out to Doug to walk me through the process, but I have not received any word back. Because those adjustments, like I said, those, those adjustments are, the report that I'm pulling has no way to track it back to the original transaction, so that's where the holdup lies, and in order for us to do that, we have to run it through our test system, but I emailed him, letting him know that I have to get verification run a couple different years in order to run it through our test system, and he never, he hasn't got the option on that yet.
I appreciate, I guess, your honesty, that you didn't get to it, but I think $75 an hour to get help in your office so that you can do this, because this is a huge deal that this little adjustment is holding up. So we have to consider something to free up your time to get that done. That, that, I think, is the most important thing facing our city right now, if I'm not mistaken.
Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, is there any urgency at all to get the adjustments done? Because it feels like, week after week, there is no urgency to get this done.
No, no, there is, absolutely.
Okay.
So if it's, if it's $75 an hour for this Nielsen to come in, or, I thought there was talks of a former employee coming in for.
We have one former employee that does come in periodically to help us with certain payables and, and different things. She wasn't able to start until last week, so she was here last week, she will be here this week, and she'll be continuing to come in as she's available. So we do have one former employee who's coming in, but I don't have anyone that's able to come in full-time to take over payroll again. That was one of the questions that Mr. Ratliff had asked, that was one of the people I was supposed to reach out to last week that I didn't get a chance to, but I will call her this week.
And I believe it was Mansfield, is a like-city, with New World?
Yes.
Do they not do payroll the same?
I don't know, I'm not sure.
I thought we left it last week, that we would check and see if they could help out, maybe in volunteer status. I know when the clerk courts across the street was an absolute disaster, we had clerk of courts from all over the place, from the state of Ohio coming in to help clean out.
Yeah, so those will be the two priorities I have tomorrow, is call a former payroll clerk and call Mansfield.
Okay, thank you.
The last thing out of committee, you were checking into, we had some bond issues there, and I know the chairwoman was taking care of hers, and you were checking into somebody in your office to see if theirs had been increased or not.
It was increased, it was not signed, they had used their discretion to not sign.
Okay, so my follow-up, and that was it, that's your employee?
Yes.
And are you, as the supervisor, okay with them not signing their bond?
As explained, we don't get an additional bond at the following year, because the way was explained to us is, they should have opted to sign bond, and then bond company chooses to not. If bond company chooses to not, we have to be evaluated, because you can't have a bond in that office.
Correct. I mean, in my way of looking at it, if council passed something that says that the position in your office has to carry X amount in bond, and they won't sign their bond, that's, to me, that's a refusal to do your job. And it's ludicrous that we would pay for a bond and then just have somebody not sign it, and, and we talk about throwing money away.
Ms. Lang?
Actually, there was no legislation passed for that.
I was, you know, maybe I'm wrong, I was thinking that there was.
Do you have something else? I think there's a distinction that everybody needs to comprehend. You, in the auditor, were just discussing the bond of an employee within the auditor's office. It needs to be separation, where we left the discussion last week regarding the bond of the chairperson of finance. So those are two distinct, separate things. So I don't have a recollection of whether council had passed an ordinance requiring, is it the internal auditor, or the inter? Did they pass an ordinance requiring her bond to be increased?
I don't recall any of those discussions.
So, this, on the specific issue of the internal auditor and her bond requirement, if there was an ordinance passed that said the internal auditor's bond shall be this amount, then your discussion's right on point, but I don't want it to get me confused with the bond of the chairperson of finance, they're two separate things. Because as far as I can tell, there was no ordinance passed requiring the chairperson of finance to be bonded, or, 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 I did.
All right. Any other matters?
Question. What is section 123.01? Um, on, on our agenda? Wait, where, where are we, where are we getting that from? Footnote one. Pursuant to section 123.01, chairman of the finance committee of council is a member of the treasury investment board. Chairman serves backup to the treasurer when signature is required in his absence for transfers over $50,000.
That is Marion codified ordinance 123.01.
So you said this council's never passed anything, but yet somehow we quote section 123.01.
I've looked at 123.01 and the ordinance that came with it, and it did not mention the finance chair. It simply, 123.02 establishes the finance chair as the backup to the treasurer, um, and it doesn't require bonding in that. I did not understand it. It's been there since I took over. I, I have no.
I believe it was added by a prior clerk. I think it's important that this current clerk share with you ordinance, the ordinance he just referenced, O1 and O2, and we can pick up discussion once everybody has the actual ordinances in their hands. It's the only way to have a productive discussion.
Thank you.
Okay, because I wasn't even sure this, I didn't even know this was still an issue. I thought this was resolved at committee.
Moving on to committee meetings. Airport lands and buildings, Ms. Lane?
Uh, nothing at this time.
All right. Economic development, Mr. R. Smith?
Nothing at this time.
Uh, legislation on codes, Mr. Neff?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. So there's nothing on rules of council?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Mr. Teasman?
Uh, nothing at this time.
Mr. Ratliff?
I have nothing to call at this time.
All right.